All right, we will call this meeting to order. You can have roll call, please. Mr. Nunley is absent. Commissioner McLaughlin, will you do the invocation? Please stand there. Please welcome Michael Powell from Palm Central FFA. Can you please do the pledge?
Hello, my name is Michael Powell. I'm Palm Central FFA. We're going to do the pledge, so if you guys are ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, guys.
All right, we can have approval for the agenda, please. Got a motion? And a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed, motion carries. Public addresses to the board, anybody that signed up? All right, let's do that. Can I have a motion to approve the presentation? Got a motion? And a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you. We have several presentations this evening, and I'm glad, personally, I'm always thrilled to do is our Employee of the Month. And this is a very special one, because it's really a great recognition and nomination to recognize Shaquana Williams with Public Health for her being selected as Employee of the Month. And she is currently the Clerical Supervisor. She interviewed it. She was nominated for her remarkable drive and dedication. She took initiative after the WIC nutrition director's departure in October 2023 and has consistently demonstrated her commitment ever since. She quickly learned the network practices, collaborated with other WIC leaders, and began building a structure for achieving the floor for her promotion. She was tasked with increasing participation, and she's overcome challenges in staffing and procedural issues while remaining focused on enrollment. Shaquana is dedicated to improving service delivery and is deeply invested in the well-being of the community and the client. Even after her promotion to Supervisor, she still engages with clients directly at the service window, treating each one like family that is the nominee. So we are thrilled that she has been with Pitt County Government since 2016. She is a model for other employees, and we are thrilled to present you today with a certificate of recognition that reads Employee of the Month, February 2025, presents to Shaquana Williams. That will say Public Health in recognition of your dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County Governments and the citizens that you serve. And along with that, you can check your direct deposit, and there will be a $100 check in there for you. Mr. Chairman, if you would present that. Thank you so much. Okay, next up, we have a series of Eagle Scouts. And typically, Commissioner Palmer will introduce these. He is our resident Eagle Scout on the Board of Commissioners, and knows and recognizes the significance and importance of this incredible milestone achievement. But if you wanted to say a few words to Commissioner Palmer before we present these, that will be that.
Thank you, President. And the Eagle Award is the highest awarded of Lincoln and Hainan Scout. So it's an honor of the Commissioners to recognize the outstanding effort and chemistry of the dispatch signing, and I think some of the other Eagles were there at the celebration. Very well at the celebration, very well performing. You all did an outstanding job, so thank you for that.
Yes, we so appreciate your contribution to the community, and I'll call you up on one by one to read your presentable certificate. We'll get a picture, and then at the end, let's get a group picture, since we have such a large crowd of you today. And when you come, you're welcome to come with your family. So the first one, Frederick Money, if you would come forward. And anyone who came with you, welcome to join you if they'd like. I'll just have them run, we'll take you right on that. So you'll be in the center of the picture. And this certificate reads your certificate of appreciation awarded Frederick Money for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. And for his project, he built three sheds and three platforms for shooting for Pitt County's four H Shooting Sports Program. And it was presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners on the 24th day of February 2025, signed by Benji Hollman, Chairman of Pitt County Board of Commissioners, and he will present this to you. And you step aside, and then we'll call you back. Gabriel London, you'll come forward with your family. All right, Gabriel is awarded this certificate of appreciation for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he built two mobile garden beds, 15 bird feeders, and five birdhouses at the McGregor Downs Health and Rehabilitation Center. And we present this to you on this day, signed by Chairman Benji Hollman. Thank you, and if you'd like, please, go over to the front again. And we always like to thank the parents as well, because we know that these accomplishments would not have occurred without the support of families. Thank you for the process. Nora Anne London. Parents want to come back lower. This certificate of appreciation is not right here, is awarded to Nora Anne London for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. Her project was to improve patio spaces at the O'Plod American Cancer Society by building new barbecue tables, yard games, and refurbished pre-existing Eagle Scout project tables, presented to you this day by Benji Hollman, Chairman. Thanks for special to have two of the family and you at a same time. Jacob Anne Reed. All right. Jacob Anne Reed is awarded this certificate of appreciation for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. And for his project, he built four lesson boxes for the food bank of central eastern North Carolina, presented to you by Chairman Hollman. Baderahia Foyle. Have to feel free to come forward if you'd like. This certificate of appreciation is awarded to Baderahia Foyle for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. And for his project, he built flower beds and baked terraces at his local church, presented to you by Chairman Hollman. Next up, Esteban Morales. This certificate of appreciation is awarded to Esteban Morales for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. And for his project, he renovated the Third Street Academy's playground. And Chairman Hollman will present that to you. If you'd like, so we can all get into the picture. Trayden Quinn. And that certificate of appreciation is awarded to Trayden Quinn for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. And for his project, he enhanced the landscaping around the flat pole at South Central Apex Bowl, presented to you this day by Chairman Benji Hollman. And last but not least, Ethan Curran. Ethan Curran? All right, we will get this to him. And just so that the group knows, he achieved Eagle Scout Award. And for his project, he built wood duck boxes at Wildwood Park. Get this impressive group of scouts up front for a group picture.
Chairman, while we're doing that, if we could get a motion to approve the certificates as presented?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you so much for your incredible accomplishment. And our last presentation this morning is for Ryan and Avery. Ryan and Avery present. Here he is. Fantastic, we'll have you step right on the.
I'm sorry, we need a motion to put that one as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand.
All right, well, it is my absolute pleasure this evening to present Ryan Avery with a resolution honoring him for his years of service with Pitt County Government, and he's retiring. And this resolution reads, whereas Ryan Avery has faithfully and dedicatedly served residents of Pitt County for over three decades, beginning his career in 1993 with the Pitt County Department of Social Services, and has consistently demonstrated excellence in his professional duties. And whereas Ryan Avery began his career as an income making case worker two, providing vital assistance to the community, ensuring individuals and families receive the necessary resources to achieve stability. And whereas, through his dedication and expertise, Ryan Avery was promoted to Social Worker Two, then reclassified to Social Worker Three, where his leadership and problem solving abilities continue to contribute to the department's success. And whereas, Ryan Avery's continued excellence in leadership potential were recognized, leading to his promotion to Social Work Supervisor Two, where he demonstrated a commitment to mentoring and guiding others in the department. And whereas, Ryan Avery's remarkable skill set, leadership, and dedication earned him a well-deserved promotion to Income Making Administrator Two, where he has continued to lead by example, offering to streamline services, and making the lasting difference of the lives of those he serves. And whereas, Ryan Avery's tenure at Pitt County is characterized by his unwavering commitment to service, collaboration, and advocacy for the community, making him a valued and respected leader within the department and the county as a whole. Now therefore, be resolved that the members of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize and honor Ryan Avery for his exemplary service to the citizens of Pitt County from 1993 to 2025, and express our deepest gratitude for his years of hard work, dedication, and unwavering commitment to improving the lives of those he has served. Adopted this the 24th day of February of 2025, signed by Benji Hollman, Chairman of the Commissioners, and tested by Kimberly Hines, Clark to the board, and we will present this to you in front of your Director, Chairman Rochelle. Do you want to say?
Well, I'd just like to say it's been a true honor to see you work for the Department of Social Services. I really don't know where all the time went. And I'm very appreciative of everybody who's helped me along the way, those working in the Department of Social Services and the county. The support and help I received from my parents, my sister, they were all deployed and helping me through my career, and I just wanted to acknowledge them. And I look forward to the next chapter of my life.
Mr. Chairman, we can now return to public addresses. First person I have time to speak is Marcus Carrington, as he's coming or returning was written on our statement.
Thank you. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
Good evening, everyone. Marcus Carrington, again, to see everybody again. I'm going to keep this very, very short, because we have been up here how many times? Many, many, many times. People already get plenty of information, it doesn't need to be repeated. I just want to say that I represent many people in Pitt County. We should have a lot more here, but many are sitting. And I think some are lost between here and the building. But most people I have talked to oppose any more new gun ordinances. Or potentially talk to, they just don't even care. But the majority of the people we talk to, they're against all these new gun ordinances. Why? Because they already have so many on the books as it is, we don't need anymore. Just enforce what we have, and we should be good with that. And it's pretty plain and simple. We don't need anything else attacking our constitutional rights. And I'm going to keep it pretty simple. I appreciate it, God, for that conversation. Many of us oppose the gun laws. Have a good evening.
Daniel Cox, or forgive me if I'm reading that wrong. Daniel Cox?
I'm good. I need to sort of say what I think is said.
Okay, thank you. Gregory Seeks.
Howdy, Commissioners. Name's Gregory from Pitt County. I'm a live member of Gun Owners America and a live member of Grassroots North Carolina. Tonight, I would like y'all to vote no for the new ordinance. It's just charging somebody with a misdemeanor is a little too harsh, and a civil infraction would be fine, but I would vote no for the ordinance. Thank you so much.
Jeff Thomas?
He's against that, he's got to leave, they're not here.
Ricky Hines?
Yeah, you started my time, I think. No, okay, I'm just kidding. Good evening, my name is Ricky Hines. I'm the Mayor of Winterville, North Carolina. I reside at 2452 Surry Lane in Winterville. I'm here tonight, I'm the new chairperson for the mayors of Pitt County. And so I'm just here to invite y'all out to all our nine municipalities, and along with Greenville, of course. And we represent 25,960 people in our municipalities. And we would love for y'all to take the time out. I know we're all busy, but come to some of our meetings. Councilman, I mean, I still call him Councilman. But Commissioner Smith always come in and sit in at our meetings over in Winterville, because he represents us over in the Winterville area, of course. But we would love to see some of the rest of the, you know, come by, visit. County Manager Gallagher, she's been by, I invited her to come by. So what we're trying to do is trying to foster some good relationships, because we don't see any until it's time to vote. And then what happens is, the residents call us, ask us about you. We want the residents to know who you are, instead of just when it's time to vote. So come out and take a part in the municipalities, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Last person I have time to speak looks like the first initial S. And I can't read the rest of it.
Does this say G, R, N, C?
Yes.
Thank you. Sean Sorrentino.
That's it.
I should have been more careful when I was scrolling on that, that's not worth all. I'm Sean Sorrentino. I am the Vice President of Operations for Grassroots North Carolina, and I'm here to represent our members in Pitt County. We, are we still doing this? I mean, this has been, got dropped a while back. We've argued about this. A misdemeanor for what is essentially a noise violation? Does that make any sense? We would recommend that you get rid of this. Stop trying to change things. You've got to noise ordinance, enforcing noise ordinance. But let's be done with this, please. None of our members are interested in seeing this. We've got a lot of them this time. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move along to the public hearing. Kelly Andrews, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager Gallagher. This public hearing pertains to Project Maverick, an industrial project pursuing the purchase of county-owned parcel 62663, which consists of 2.65 acres located along Elliott Dixon Drive in Eaton. The property has a current tax value and market value of $106,000. This project plans to construct a facility and locate machinery and equipment on the property estimated at approximately $3 million over the next five years. It will also bring at least 34 new jobs with an average salary at or above the median average wage, a private sector wage of $52,773, over five years. It is our recommendation that we convey the property to Project Maverick for a monetary payment of $49,000, with remaining consideration of the difference in this amount and the market value being future tax revenues that will be received by the county as a result of this project's location on the property over five years. This will be contingent on an executed economic development agreement outlining the terms of the conveyance. As this project will bring a new company to Pitt County, as well as tax revenues and jobs, we respectfully ask that you approve conveying parcel 62663 to Project Maverick, approve the corresponding resolution, and authorize the execution of an economic development agreement and any additional documents relating to this transaction.
All right, I will declare the public hearing open. Has anybody signed up to speak?
There is no one signed up to speak.
All right, we will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the Lord?
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second. Well, okay, we have a motion, and a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to items for report, plus we'll heal.
Good evening, Chairman Hollman, Commissioners, and County Manager. This evening, I present to you the January Tax Collection Report. The fiscal year combined tax collection rate through January 31, 2025, for real and personal property was 95.63%. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was 96.02%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available to the North Carolina general statutes. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If my, it's my recommendation to approve the January Tax Collection Report as presented.
You got a motion, and a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed, motion carries. Mr. Sam Crone.
Good evening, Chairman Hollman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Tonight, I bring you the January 2025 Financial Report for the General Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and EMS Fund. We are seven months into the fiscal year at this point, or 58.3% of the year. For the General Fund, we have collected 70.1% of anticipated revenues and spent 53.8% of budgeted expenditures. For solid waste, we have collected 79.3% and spent 59%. EMS, we have collected 84.6% and spent 56.4%. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation for a motion to approve the monthly financial report as presented.
You got a motion, and a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed, motion carries. Pitt Green Multi-Jurisdictional Industrial Park, Trey Cash, and Kelly Andrews.
Again, Chairman, and Commissioners, and County Manager, good evening. Trey Cash and I are joined tonight to assist in the, I was going to insist in the presentation in which we collectively and collaboratively wish to partner on a multi-jurisdictional industrial park. Trey, give yourself an interview.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, and County Manager. I send greetings from Chairman Heath, the Board, and the rest of Pitt County Board of Commissioners, and appreciation of your time. Also, I'm glad to have County Manager DeHaven here with me supporting me. As you all know, we have done a lot of work in Greene County in the past five years in economic development, and we are honored to have the time to speak to you tonight.
So what we're, the reason that we're even looking at doing this is one big, simple reason. Across the state of North Carolina, there's a lack of quality, sizable shovel-ready sites. Several of the state's largest industrial sites have recently been chosen for high-capital industrial investment projects. For example, Ventron Energy in Edgecombe County announced $1.4 billion and a large portion of Edgecombe County's Kingborough site in this past year. There are less than 100 sites currently marketed in North Carolina with over 200 acres. What you see here are all the sites in the state's database. 1,279 over 100 counties. Of the ones with over 100 acres, 211, so about 10%. Over 200 acres, less than 100. The 500 acres didn't even show up on here, it's only 30. And over 1,000 acres, less than 10 across the state of North Carolina. We have been working on some sizable parks, and do have a couple of things in the works in Pitt County and Greene County. We have, Pitt County alone has seven, only 17 sites in the state's database of properties, each in different states of shovel readiness. How many, do you know about how many you have in Greene County?
Yep, so prior to our personally near farm, we only had 46 acres near Interstate 587. Last year, in Greene County, we hired a national search firm to look at all countywide properties and see which one will be our next industrial site. We're very fortunate that they selected a site near the Pitt County line and near a farm.
We compete for many projects, even with our limited inventory and lack of shovel-ready sites across the state. Individually, we could compete for projects that need 100, 200, 300 acres. However, there are projects looking for even larger tracts, and combining our sites, which we'll talk about in just a second, would allow us to submit for more and larger projects. And of course, that means more investment, larger investment, and larger job numbers. And if either county wins the project, it's a win for both counties. Let's talk about our two sites. So up in the, I guess, top left corner is Farmville Corporate Park. This has been in existence for over 20 years, and we have a little over 400 acres there. We have two tenants there, VR Burton and Coastal Beverage, that have been there for, VR Burton's been there less than 10 years, Coastal Beverage's probably been there 15 to 20 years. We have done extensive due diligence on this site. We have been selected for the, the EMC, North Carolina Electric Cooperative's Rural Ready Sites Program, and they have generously given us extensive recent due diligence, because that's key, too. You have to have due diligence that's up to date on that site. And we also were selected for the Select Sites Program through our Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. This was one of 15 sites across the state that were selected that were up to 1,000 acres. They saw the potential in this for major manufacturing projects. So that's key to, again, part of why we're looking to do this. Let's talk about your business.
I'd be glad to talk more about our site. In Green County, the past five years, our strategy has been to grow our own garden. And that means to find more products to sell because we want to get out of the rural status and try to be competing with major areas such as Raleigh or New Hampshire. So with that, myself, County Manager Heath, and the Board of Commissioners trusted us with looking for more land. So last year, we hired a firm, we found a site, and we were able to negotiate with over seven different parcel owners to get land under option for five, over five years for over 630 acres on Burnett Road. That is in, in near Farmville, if you're going into Farmville, and also if you're coming from Stone Hill, Grebel, it's off right off there, too. So we're very excited about that, and we're very excited about the possibility. And I want to say that at the very start of this-
Buying or even optioning this property, there would be no need to, it's not developable. That doesn't mean that we could not join forces on a multi-county park. It is in the same electric service area, Pitt Green EMC, it's in the same wastewater service area. So we have some potential to maximize our capacity in wastewater and electric and really master plan this well. So we have, well, I mentioned the electric provided wastewater, and we could also market this as one big parcel of basically over 1,000 acres, or up to 1,000 acres, which would allow us to pursue and submit for projects that we couldn't have done individually, that we can't do individually. So yes, we can do up to, for us, 400 acres, and you could do up to 600 acres, but how about those seven, eight, nine, 1,000 acre projects? And there are some of those. They're not as plentiful as the others, but those are some of your high-end projects with big, big capital investment numbers and job numbers. So the opportunity is, again, and I mentioned that Farmville Corporate Park was chosen as one of 15 select sites. It has extensive due diligence already done, we're already selling industrial, and we're in that cooperative ready sites program. Green County, being a Pitt Green Electric Service Area, has the opportunity to be in that program as well. So there's money there, there's opportunities for best support to get that due diligence done. You also have, you go ahead.
You know, since our site is fairly new, one dive, and so we are making our goal this year is to be shovel-ready by the end of 2025. So with that, the Board of Commissioners and help with the County Manager have a budget of $125,000 for due diligence. We just contracted a Terracotta out of the Wendell office to complete that. We're hoping to complete most of that work within the summer. Additionally, we're seeking additional gold lead funding for due diligence to get us up to shovel-ready for that, and with our industrial zoning coming very soon.
So really, our next steps would be to solidify this partnership, if it is your pleasure, to develop an interlocal agreement. There is precedent for this, there's two county parks in Brunswick and Columbus Counties, Lincoln and Gaston Counties, there's the Triangle Board, which is actually a four county partnership, and a couple more, and so there's precedent for it that we can follow. We can work with the Select Site Program Manager to maximize support opportunities to really market and develop and master plan this. We can certainly, we hold options separately, we can market it separately, but market it together, we can go after those larger projects. And we can maximize on our marketing dollars as well as our planning dollars for utilities and other due diligence that's needed. And we can submit for manufacturing and distribution projects that we couldn't before. So I think it's a win-win for all of us. Anything you want to add, Trey?
Yeah, I think regardless, the two sites are great sites, and I think regardless if the project wants to land on one of those sites, the Town of Farmville, Pitt County, Green County, and all of them, but if we work together and not compete against each other, work together, we can really get a transformational project that really changes Green County, Town of Farmville, and Pitt County, and have a site that looks and feels like a shovel ground.
And with that, we just ask for any feedback, any questions you have onto this report.
Any questions from the Board? Hold on, we've got a motion here.
Yes, yes, go, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you for the motion.
We have a motion.
Yes.
And do you have anything to say?
No, I'm busy.
Okay. And we've got a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Nobody's opposed, motion passed.
And just for clarification, that's a motion for us to move forward with the [inaudible] agreement, we'll bring that back to you this night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And now moving on to the managers' report.
Yes, several items for you this evening. Remember, the Board, our next meeting dates are March 10th and March 24th at 6:00 p.m. in this alternate room, already is here at the Ag Center. Also, a reminder that March 1st to the 4th is the Native Legislative Conference in Washington, DC, for those who are signed up to attend. Another reminder upcoming on March 11th at 4:00 p.m. at Welcome Middle School is your joint meetings at the City of Greenville, and that's to discuss the mega site north of the river. And then, as an additional reminder, on March 17th, you have a joint meeting with the Pitt Community College Board of Trustees and the [inaudible] Smith Center for Student Advancement in that Christmas multipurpose room at 8:30 in the morning. Now, two additional items, Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow. One, and they're somewhat related, we are pleased that our staff and community for the most part remain safe during this recent winter ice storm. And I wanted to share with the Board that although county offices were closed due to the dangerous conditions of the roads for three days last week, that we remain responsive to the needs of our community as we were able, meaning that the Sheriff's Office didn't stop, 911 didn't stop, animal services came in and took care of the animals that were there, and those other 24-hour operations continued in play. And what I also wanted to raise your attention was that based on the needs of those that we serve, John Dembryan, Director of Solid Waste, did open the transfer station on Saturday and on Sunday, because some municipalities were picking up trash. And on Saturday, we had 219 customers, 780, 98 tons of trash received at the transfer station, on which brought in about $19,800, maybe $200 in revenue that day. And then as well, on Sunday for 8 to 12, we had 44 customers, 229 tons received and revenue associated with that. It was primarily on Sunday residential trash thrown in by the City of Greenville, but I wanted you to know that although we are close to the public for the services that were non-essential, that we did go the extra mile to be sure that we were serving the citizens even during that period of time, and we're appreciative for that. And then that leads me to the last item, which I had spoken with the Chairman about as we were collaborating and comparing between the Chairman, the Emergency Management Director, and I on inclement weather closures, and whether or not it makes sense to open for partial days or to close for full days. And after that collaboration, we made the decision to close for three full days. In front of you, you should have a copy of Pitt County's Inclement Weather Emergency Closing Policy, which is Section 121, Pitt County's Personnel Ordinance. And some of you who've been on this board may recall that several years ago, we added inclement weather leave, so that when the county is closed and employees can't come due to no fault of their own, that they didn't have to be unpaid or use their personal time to do so. It was a significant job dissatisfier for our employees at the time. And our employees, I would say 1,100 strong, appreciate the provision in Section 121D, Sub 1, Part E. That policy limits closures to 24 hours. And what I would recommend to you this evening is that for our staff, that you modify this ordinance, if the board would be so inclined, to change that 24 to 40, so that we would be in a position to be able to pay our staff for the days that we had to close. I'm ready to make my last suggestion.
We have a motion. Second. In a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and that's all I have on my record.
Then, I'd like to say, thank you for the new trucks that did the scraping on the highway. I think it was vision and a good thing, and putting the sold out a day ahead of time. That was great.
Well, and that was in collaboration with our municipal workers as well, and a shout-out to the City of Greenville, who went on to beyond some of their city streets to help us on government circle. They did it in the last one, they did it in this one, to Ryan RH as well. And I think that's just another testament of the partnership, the strong partnerships that we have with our municipalities and local governments. And we did follow up with DOTF for the last one, and I was very pleased to see more thorough and more [inaudible] for us here in the county as well.
All right, moving along to items for consent. Chairman, any motion? Put it in a second. Put a motion in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 11, items for discussion. Commissioner Manning.
Mr. Sir, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I asked that two ordinances be brought before you. We've, I know that the prior board, I say prior board before I came on in December, had struggled with public complaints about firearm use and the lack of ordinance or law to enforce. The Sheriff's Office needed some, some tools to be able to keep the peace. It was, and the discussion was focused on Holly Pines subdivision. My understanding is that this is not the first complaint, such as that, that we've had, but that was the one that was before the Board, and I remember sitting in on one of the meetings where the residents from Holly Pines came in and talked about, were asking the Board for some relief from an individual who was, who would frequently discharge a firearm in the middle of the night, waking up everybody in the neighborhood, and that furthermore, he was shooting, I guess he lives on a lot there in the subdivision, and he was shooting into property, across the property lines and into other properties, one of which was a church property, where there is a building and a parking lot on the other side of the wooded area. So anyway, the ordinance that was passed by the previous Board, we had to be, come back for a second reading after I joined the Board, and I, I disagreed with the 300-foot rule. I thought it was an encroachment on private property, that people, restrained people from being able to use their own property for things like, you know, target shooting or whatever. And so anyway, and I said I would come back to the Board with an ordinance, and what I've come back with is two ordinances. And these two ordinances basically, one is to prohibit shooting across property lines, basically to retain, that when you, I guess you all have a copy of it, do you not, in your packet? Okay. And, and to, to, to keep the, when you discharge a firearm, to do so in a manner to keep the projectile on your property or the property you have permission to use, and not to cross property lines. And the other ordinance is regarding discharging a firearm at night in densely populated subdivisions, mobile home parks, campgrounds, and multifamily housing complexes. These two ordinances, in my mind, speak directly to gun safety. I'm a longtime shooter, I enjoy recreational shooting, but I also, and as, you know, everyone should, should, safety should be the number one concern. When you pull the trigger on a gun, you need to know where that shot's going to land. And what apparently some people don't understand is that the range on some of these weapons can go for miles, especially some of the rifles. And, you know, I took the oath of office on December the 2nd, and the very next morning, I happened to be listening to WRL News, and I knew this gun ordinance thing was coming up. And I hear a story about a little girl who was shot on Thanksgiving Day, and the people that the bullets came from were over a mile away. On Thanksgiving Day, this family get together in the backyard, and this child was shot from a, from a high-powered rifle. Now, I think from the story that some people got charged over in Johnston County, but that's, that was the very next day, and that kind of set the tone for me. We, we need to do something to give the Sheriff's Office the tools, meaning a law or ordinance that they can enforce. The noise ordinance does not, is not enforceable. They've been to this location in Holly Pines, they've attempted to enforce the noise ordinance, but what happens is the individual either stopped shooting or had stopped shooting before they arrived, and they're unable to get the decimal reading on the victim or the complainant's property, which is required be done for a noise ordinance violation. They have talked to the individual, and he basically, he knew they couldn't charge him, so he just basically said, "Get off my property." So the sheriff and the deputies are asking for something that they can enforce. Now, I've talked to a lot of people over the last year campaigning, you're out there with people, and you hear people, and you talk to people. I have not run up with anybody that thinks that waking up neighbors in a neighborhood in the middle of the night is a good thing. I have not met anybody that thinks that they would like to have bullets flying through their property in their backyard and possibly injuring their family, like this little girl in Johnston County. So that's the way I tailored these two ordinances. One, to prohibit shooting across property lines, and two, to prohibit shooting in a subdivision in densely populated areas. And I've tried to define that, we're not talking about that in the country where it's open fields and woods, we're talking about neighborhoods. So, and I know that one of our citizens sent an email today, I haven't had time to study it, she's got a little problem with the subdivision definition. But, and then there's some, some, some emails from, from the Grassroots North, I guess somebody writes these things, and then I get a whole bunch of emails that have the same, they're cut and paste. But I just want to point out one thing in the email that I got from most of the GRNC, which I think that represents the Grassroots North Carolina. It says right here, Grass, GRNC, and everyone are, of course, against unlawful, irresponsible, and dangerous behavior that results in firearm rounds crossing into or across another person's property or public areas. So there's some consensus there from the gun owners and the people that generally have had a lot to say about violating Second Amendment rights, and I contend that there's nothing in these ordinances that violates the right to own and possess weapons. So I guess, Mr. Chairman, maybe I'll return it back to you to see if anyone else wants to have some comments about this.
Thank you, sir.
Hold on.
So far. One second. This would classify the first reading, is that correct, for new ordinance?
This is actually a heading for discussion. So depending upon the Board's discussion, you could take any number of actions. You could set it for a, for a public hearing, if you chose to. You could set it for a first reading, if you chose to, or you could choose to go to a public hearing and do your [inaudible]. Absolutely.
All right. Now we'll open the floor. Now we're open to floor for discussion. Commissioner Manning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Commissioner Manning, for your ability to work with us. Not the rehash of whole history, but the former, the former Commissioner for, we're so lucky to have Commissioner Manning elected, who's a longtime, long-term officer, and brings a depth and knowledge of this issue. Really worked hard to craft something that directly, directly helped citizens that were in need under these circumstances, and tried to do it in a way that was tailored, and so we didn't infringe on their rights. And in various public hearings, we had a lot of opposition. And I, for one, and I think a number of us on this board were, I have to press that, a number of us on this board were, you know, mindful and thoughtful about what was raised. I think when we look at it, a couple of things that I think that are good about these two, it gets at the heart of really two issues. One was raised persistently, is that we've already got laws and statutes in place, so we'll handle this. Well, you might think that, but logistically, that's not true, and Commissioner Manning raises a good point, and I just wanted to kind of nail down on this. The current noise ordinance deals with noises that are measurable, and the typical noises that we encounter in our neighborhoods, firearm noises are by the, you know, by definition, rapid and immediately fleeting. And it is, and it is next to impossible to have a decimal reader to address the same type of concern that our noise ordinance is meant to address. Commissioner Manning's regulation here draws, draws on experience of law enforcement that says, hey, we need a different methodology to determine what is, you know, was acceptable noise. Everyone knows it's common sense that noise of firearms loud, and it's just disruptive if it is in close proximity to residences. And you don't want that going on in the middle of the night, if you live right next to it. That's just common sense. I think this gets at the heart of that, and it does kind of push through the barrier of that other, gives our law enforcement a mechanism to actually enforce, enforce, abiding by the regulation, which, again, I haven't heard anyone that stated that that's an unreasonable request, that you don't shoot right next door to your neighbor in the middle of the night. And then, and then two, we've got the discharge, a number of concerns raised about the type of backstop under the formal ordinance. There was a lot of talk about the backstop was too onerous, we couldn't do it. I think what this does a good job of saying, we're not getting into that. We're just saying, don't cross, just don't cross the property. We're not getting into your business about how you're going to keep the bullet from crossing over into the property lines. We're just saying that you can't do it. And that, again, gets to the heart of what the issue is. The issue is safety, and we don't want projectiles falling into other people's property without permission, right? And presumably, if there's permission, that there are other safeguards in place, that it doesn't affect anything outside of that. So we've got the effective chain. So I think that that addresses the safety issue. There's been another thing that I inquired about after the first reading of our former regulation, and that had to do with civil versus criminal penalties. And this is really semantics. There are a number, and this is how North Carolina criminal law works and how civil penalties work. The Sheriff's Department has no enforcement mechanism, and our county attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but our Sheriff's Department has no enforcement provision for a civil, for a civil violation, to the extent that someone can call the Sheriff's Department and have them come enforce someone shooting in violation of this code. In order for it to be enforceable by law enforcement, it has to be a criminal offense, just like you running a stop sign is a criminal offense, or you breaking, breaking speed limit is a criminal offense. It's categorized technically as a criminal offense. We're not calling you a criminal. You broke a code. It's a code violation. But in, under the way that laws are organized in the state of North Carolina, we have to call it that, because that's the way our laws are drafted. So we're not calling you a bad person. We just said that you broke this regulation. And it's bizarre, but that's, that's the way that it is, and that's how our criminal and civil statutes are divided. So in order to enforce it, it has to be, in my understanding, it needs to be categorized as a criminal regulation, or the penalty provision would have to be. So for those reasons, and I think that simplifies a lot of the issues, I think that this gets right down to the heart of the matter, without infringing on people's Second Amendment rights to target practice in a way that's safe. And, and I think that it's a good time for us to maybe set it up for a formal second reading. If there's anything that needs to be added after the discussion, I'm open to that. But I think this is a really good attempt at getting, getting to the root of the problem and not overstepping. So thank you, Commissioner Manning.
Commissioner White.
Thank you. Mr. County Attorney, if, I have a question for you. If I'm on my property and I shoot a gun, and I'm shooting on my neighbor's property, is that against the law as is?
You mean the projectile?
I mean, like, I'm just shooting towards their property, like, I'm just shooting on their property. Is, that's already against the law as is, right, if they don't give me their permission?
I think, so technically, no, unless it's in a reckless manner. So I don't think shooting across someone's property line, at this point, is a criminal offense. You shoot into an occupied dwelling, if you shoot into, like, if it's out, you're just spraying bullets all over the place in a reckless manner, that can be considered a criminal offense. But if your projectile just leaves your property, goes across another property line, at this point, that's not a criminal offense.
During my time on the board, I have never seen so many people show up to speak out and voice their concerns against something. We've had this brought before the board more times than I can count on both hands at this point. And every time, we have had numerous, numerous people show up. We've had hundreds of people to sign petitions. We've had 50, 60 people show up to voice their concerns. We had a small turnout tonight, and I think some of that is in part to the change in location of our meeting. But also, I've had several people reach out to me and say that they feel like what they come and say before this board just falls on deaf ears, because it keeps being brought up and brought up and brought up. And a lot of people feel the way it's been brought up, oh, let's bring it up, it doesn't pass, or it doesn't get voted on, and then we wait a couple months and bring it back up. People lose trust like that. They feel like you're trying to do something and maneuver around. The majority of the people in this county do not want any gun ordinances passed, because it opens a can of worms, and it sets a dangerous precedent for this board to enforce and pass gun ordinances. The punishment in here was really harsh, too. As I've said before, and I know that y'all are probably tired of hearing me say this, but I'm going to say it again, I know I sound like a broken record, it is our job to do the will of the people. That's what we're on this board to do. We're not up here to pass our personal opinions, agendas, or feelings. We are up here to do the will of the majority of the people. So with that being said, I do not support this ordinance.
Commissioner McGlone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a former law enforcement officer, basic parole training firearm instructor, I found out, and I'm understanding more now, we can't satisfy everybody. It's impossible. Why, Commissioner Manning, with 30 years of experience, 30 years of experience in law enforcement and firearm training, he came up with a situation that I think is, that we can take and use it for the benefit of everybody, for the benefit of the citizens here, in this audience, and the citizens of Pitt County. He did some, he did his homework. He did it early. Again, we can't satisfy every issue, every situation, because it's different. But at the same time, we can do what's right. And I think this proposal that he drafted was, was served in the best interest of Pitt County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Most pleasure to vote.
I'd like to say that, it's a killer, and it was a long, 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 long time. Oh. You say that, I'm gonna do that. I'm sorry. I'll start again. I'd like to say that I'm very in tune with the public. I'm very in tune with the public being safe. But when people disrespect your quality of life as living in a house, and bullets are going through windows and lodging in the homes of other people, because I've gotten this phone call, and they still say, don't do anything about it. It bothers me, because what we want to do, wait for something to happen, just like it did in Johnston County. And I saw that same article, or Mr. Manning, or Commissioner Manning, and I read that same article. And unfortunate, I don't think 400, 500 people coming to our meeting is going to say that that's the majority of the residents in Pitt County. We have to do something, because people are talking about bullets lodging in walls and going through windows, because they did, they have no respect for your neighbors. So we have to do something. And because this affects churches, schools, a matter of fact, there was shooting near one of the schools in Pitt County as well, on Holly Road. And so here, and it talks about multiple family, it covers all the residential style homes, heavy populated area. I live in the country, y'all. My mama ate a lot of grass. But you know, the thing of it is, people in the rural area are respectful of guns, and we don't just shoot in heavily populated areas. I mean, my goodness. So I like your recommendation, Commissioner Manning. I respect your application of your lawful service in Pitt County. But I'd like to see us do something without anybody's person dying. And this ordinance would take care of it, and there is no violation, as far as I can see. So I can support it. He's worked on it. We have to have something. And the number of people here, we would have to fill this whole space up, we'll be talking about majority. We cannot talk about majority, and the people at home are not speaking. So I can support having this, this ordinance. And it does face it.
Thank you.
So that's, I'm just letting you know how my vote will go, and support that whenever it comes up. But I think if you want us to flood this place out with people coming, because no, every, we can't satisfy everyone, but it's a problem when schools, shooting is next to schools. We haven't had that in Pitt County yet, where bullets are actually going in. So we should do something before something happens that makes us a part of news in a very negative way. But I'd like to see us have it on again, and I know we don't like to have and stay on, in a meeting forever and a day. But, and yes, I agree with, somebody said something about, the emails were saying the same thing, they just copied and dropped it and changed names. It's not an expression of a difference of an opinion. So the babies got to be protected, the elderly got to be protected. And if this place were full tonight, it wouldn't be the majority of the people in Pitt County. When we make policies and rules, we're looking at whole Pitt Counties, I think. It, these affect whole Pitt Counties, not just Mr., Mr., Mr. Law, uh, what, um...
Correct. So this would just be...
It's for whole Pitt County, right?
Unincorporated areas.
Unincorporated areas, right? And we have heavy, a lot of subdivisions that have heavy areas, but it would be Pitt County. But it does not take rules, so I'd like to give you a chance to look at it, to see that it does not take away the rights of anybody. But yet, allows protection for all residents, so we can have a peaceful life, and we don't have to worry about shooting next to school, which is what we have in rural areas, and heavily populated subdivision. And I think this addresses it. But we didn't get a chance to really look at it, look at it, but I read it quickly, but I'd like to see us keep it on for another time. So we are not trying to hide anything, and we're openly discussing how we feel as an individual. That's my way of what I think. But if you don't agree, but I don't want a bullet going in the wall of my house, and no one else in my neighborhood, and no one else that I know, I wouldn't want it going in your house.
I appreciate that.
Uh-huh. So we got to come up with something. I want you all to know that. And it's so that we can all live a safe and respectful life for each other. So I'm willing to go waiting. I know I'm going on, y'all know I like talking, I'm through.
Thank you. Commissioner Hopkins, before she said anything else.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to thank Commissioner Manning for bringing this to, to us as a solution. I appreciate and I acknowledge his years of service and his knowledge of law enforcement and helping us with, with bringing this ordinance to us in this, in a better, better way than what we previously had. And the one thing he said that also means a lot to me, and that is safety. Safety, safety for everybody, for all of our citizens. And this is not the only issue that we have, that we have talked about and brought back and, and, you know, just massaged it. This is not the only issue we've done that. And, and I think that speaks well of us when we do that, because we, we're trying to get it right. And so we're just, not just passing an ordinance just on the fly. We do hear the citizens, and we, I don't believe there's a commissioner on this, on this board that is looking at this as a personal, as personal. I think it's, it's safety. And so for me, I am, I am in support of this, and whatever we need to do to move it forward for a first reading, I'm in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown.
First of all, I would like to say thank you to Commissioner Manning for working on this and for putting Pitt County public safety first. I think this board would all agree that that is our number one. I think that that goes without saying. My, I really have questions in this instance, so if I could, to our county... I really have questions in this instance, so if I could, to our county attorney, and really to Commissioner Manning as well, if we could define proof, proof that it crossed property lines.
So, again, that would be, again, with every criminal charge, every ordinance, it's all factually based. And so, whoever is enforcing this ordinance would have to have probable cause to be able to establish this and put it through the court system. As to proof, again, that depends on the situation, and maybe Commissioner Manning and his experience can speak to that. But again, every situation will be different, even the facts.
I'm just, and just for clarity, because I had talked to Commissioner Manning about this previously, and if we need proof, proof is going to need some structure. Structure could potentially fall on the backs of our law enforcement to provide that structure, because if for some reason it did not hit a dwelling, but yet someone says, "Well, I had proof too," well, prove it. Is that a text? Is that, "Well, he said," but now it's a "he said, she said" type of thing? And so, where does this proof take us, which takes us to the snowball effect, which really goes back to what Commissioner White had said, as far as, you know, in reality... Well, first and foremost, let me say, I have not received one single email in favor of this. So, if you are out there, I would love to truly see that, as what Commissioner White had said, to show up here tonight or to email us, because we are representing the district. But for me, I'm trying to think longer and longer term to ensure that this doesn't infringe on our rights long term, because I've heard that a couple times too tonight, and what does that then turn into if we have to provide structure for that proof? And again, I'm not saying that this isn't the right way to go. I'm just saying, can we have, you know, a more defined look at what that means long term before we all just say, "Yes, this works for a one size fits all." Because as of right now, representing the people that have voted me here, I have not had one person, not one person, in favor of. So, I would really need a more compelling overall picture to vote in favor of. So, thank you.
Commissioner Manning, I believe you had your hand up?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. A few things that I've thought about that I didn't cover, and then to answer a question. The first one, that Commissioner Brown just brought up about proof. I have absolute confidence in the investigative skills of our law enforcement officers, that they would be able to gather the type of testimonial evidence and physical evidence and in order to enforce this law. It's no different than any other investigation. And I know I've heard it said a time or two about bullets going into people's houses. There are laws that already are enforceable for shooting into an occupied property. So, if there's a house and there's a person in it, we have laws for that. They can investigate that and arrest people for that. This, what this ordinance is basically covering is when that bullet doesn't go into a vehicle or a property. And it's just, you know, it's, I've been shot at before. And I was with a group of scouts, and somebody pulled off the road on the field near where we were camping. It was dusk dark, started shooting at a deer in the field, and the bullets were whizzing around us in our campsite. That's evidence. That's testimonial evidence. And if the landowner or the property owner can testify that he's shooting, and the bullets are whizzing through the bushes and leaves in my yard, that testimonial evidence will get you a conviction, or get you toward a conviction. So, I have confidence in our law enforcement officers, that they can put a case together as needed. But the first priority of passing this ordinance is not to enforce it. The hope is that you never have to enforce it. That citizens will say, you know, "I'm going to, I'm gonna abide by this rule, and I'm not gonna do this." And it will serve as a deterrent. I don't want to enforce, I don't want to do that. I don't want to enforce it. And as far as the punishment, there's been some comment about the severity of the punishment that's laid out in this ordinance or this draft of ordinance. That is the maximum punishment. The judge will make the decision. And in most cases, in a first-time offense, if it's a minor thing, the judge is not gonna give you the maximum sentence. He's gonna give you a break, or he's gonna be modified. What's in the ordinance has to be there, because that's basically state language, that's the law, the language of the state law regarding class three misdemeanors. I'm just restating that in this ordinance, which gives the judge that authority. And the second thing, House Bill 9, that was pending in the General Assembly. I've reviewed what is there, and I, my personal opinion, because this is, lawyer can look at this, but I don't think that's gonna hinder us in passing these two ordinances. Because the actual language in, where they modified 153A, 129, that is the actual statute that gives us the authority to regulate firearms. The language that is added is that that county may, by ordinance regulations, restrict or prohibit the discharge of firearms at any time and place, except in any of the following instances. It already says, you know, hunting, basically for birds and animals, defense of personal property, or directions of a law enforcement. And it adds this language. "When used on or within private property with the permission of the owner or possessor of that property, and conducted with reasonable care to prevent a projectile from crossing the bounds of the property." That language is always almost a mirror image of the language in this ordinance, except what this ordinance makes illegal is when it crosses the boundaries of that property. So, the very language in House Bill 9 is very closely mimicking what I came up with in this ordinance. So, I just wanted to point that out. I'm ready, I mean, I'm ready to make a motion if it's appropriate for the first reading to adopt these two ordinances. But I think we did get some feedback from one citizen about the one ordinance, as far as the definition of a subdivision. It won't hurt to wait. I mean, I'm ready to go with it, but it won't hurt to carry it over and make sure. I want to get it right. You know, not rush it, and then have to come back and change something. So, it's suitable to me if we can, I appreciate this discussion. It gives me some direction, Mr. Chairman, and that we set it for a future meeting, for a first reading. And give me time to hash out with the legal staff and everything, make sure we've got every T crossed and every I dotted.
You put in the formal motion, please.
I will, that we put this on the agenda in the future for consideration, for first consideration.
We have a motion.
I have a second, though.
You got a second? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, like so? Motion carries five to four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Moving right along, items for decision. Ms. Jennifer and Nate, the 2025-2035 Cultural Arts and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan.
Good evening, Chairman Holloman, Commissioners, County Manager Gallagher. Following two years of development, the Pitt County Cultural Arts and Recreation Department is pleased to present its updated 2025-2035 Comprehensive Master Plan. Jointly led by Culture Arts and Recreation Staff, Pitt County Planning Department Staff, with consulting services provided by McGill and Associates, the plan incorporates tremendous levels of public input to provide a clear vision, set priorities, and establish a strategic framework for growth and sustainability. Further, the plan was served as a roadmap for decision-making, funding allocation, and long-term facility and program development. This was truly a team effort. As a special thank you is extended to the staff of McGill and Associates and Pitt County staff, Eric Goody, Jonas Hill, Alice Keen, PJ Andrews, Allison Schwartz, and James Rhodes. So, at this time, we turn it over to Nate with McGill and Associates to present the plan.
Thank you, Jennifer. Chairman Holloman and Commissioners, thank you for entertaining us this evening. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna hit the high points of the comprehensive plan. By all means, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have at the end. My understanding is you've had a chance to review not only the executive summary, but also the full plan. What I'm gonna go through tonight is, Jennifer alluded to this, but I have to tell you, we have a chance to do these plans all over the southeast, and the amount of collaboration and cooperation that was poured into this from staff and community members was just outstanding. It really speaks to the amount of engagement that is expected from Pitt County and the results that go with that. So, next up, I want to touch on just on the highest level, the process that was employed whenever we were going through this planning process. So, first up, we did a period of discovery and data collection. Next up, we went through a period of assessment, and really that assessment piece was trying to understand as best we could the community, their needs, what their expectations were. We moved through, after that, into a period of recommendations. There's a lot of positive motion that's going through the county right now, and certainly the recommendations are helpful for that. The other piece is that we went through an action implement and an implementation plan. So, just as a brief history, the key parts that I want you to take away from this diagram that we have up here is that for decades, Pitt County has been leading the way in a number of ways across the state. I can tell you, I've been in the field for about twenty years. If you wanted to understand how to positively engage with the school system, and you were a different department across North Carolina, Pitt County is a shining example of that. Now, every department goes through transitions, and communities go through shifts. And I gotta tell you, the way and the speed with which you are making progress right now, I want you to look at the right side of this timeline. If you can imagine, this is not typical to have this much progress and this much improvement and efforts in the right direction to happen over a short period of time. So, if you can look back since the late 1970s to 2015, those are critical pieces that you have in there. But if you look over to the right side, the creation of a new department, the hiring of a new director, significant investments in the parks and recreation, that's through budgetary increases. A comprehensive plan, new parks and development, and new recreation centers, all within the last two years. So, I gotta tell you, we work with communities all over the place that would love to get that many things done in five to ten years. The fact that y'all did that in two years is outstanding. All right, so, like we said, part of the key, the most important part of this, it would be great if we just understood what the staff had, and what y'all had, what the local leaders had, but really the heart and soul of this plan is understanding what Pitt County residents have and what they want to see. We did this in a number of different ways to find out what they wanted. The first thing was, we did a statistically valid survey to help us understand what the community wanted. We also did an open survey. We wanted to make sure, sometimes I'll fall back to the statistically valid plans, is that only a small subsection of the community can have input. That's why an open survey was conducted, and we had nearly a thousand respondents that took place during that. We also had focus group meetings. They weren't held in a single location, they were actually held all throughout the county. We wanted to make sure that we were hearing the voices from all around the entire county. So, these are some of the key findings that we have from the public. There's a number of different things in here, but one of the, I'm gonna just read off a few of these, and then I'm gonna hit you with the high points. Collaboration is a really important piece from your residents. Having additional parks and centers in the future is exceptionally important to the public. You're already making progress into that step. Understanding the value that ECU brings to the area, and partnering with those graduates. The community expressed that right now that there are limited park options in rural areas, and you're already making steps to start to address those things. The next piece was that athletics and senior programs were strong. This is good. There's nothing wrong with having those strong pieces. There was also an interest in having additional programs offered to the ages between thirteen and fifty-five, that sometimes aren't hit by those senior programs and those athletic programs. And then the last piece, and this typically comes with the transition of a department, is the need to shift your marketing tactics to make sure that all community members would know what's going on. So, this is not a bad thing, it's normal to go through processes of updating your marketing efforts. All right, so, this might come a lot across as a little difficult to see up here. The key parts that I want you to take away is that we not only understood what the public wanted, but we benchmarked you across communities across the entire country, and as well as other communities across North Carolina. The key thing that you have, that I want you to take away from this, is that, one, we understand what the public wants, we engage those against national benchmarks, but we also try to understand where you're at benchmark wise with your properties, your park properties. The key takeaway with this is that you have a small number of parks, but they're growing, which is very positive. The other thing is that you're doing a very good job with the programs that you've offered, and that there's desire for the community to have additional and more programs to come. And there's a lot of information within the plan that helps guide that. So, as some general understanding of what that is, like, and I mentioned this a little bit before, in the past, there's been good offerings that will be grown upon, which is offering athletics to the youth and your senior programs. What we're also finding is that whenever we looked at you in comparison to other departments of comparable sizes, they tend to offer a wider range of programs. They also offered variations of different types of facilities. And that's to be expected. You're shifting from a facility where your facility is more school-based to where you have standalone facilities, and that's a transition in a positive direction that we're seeing in other comparable communities. These new facilities that you're developing will allow you to offer those wider range of programs. We also evaluated your facility fees and your program fees, and typically you are in line with your comparable communities, so that's a good thing. There is a wider, a broader depth of facilities that are offered in other communities, but I gotta tell you, you're already starting to develop more facilities now, so you're transitioning into the right direction. All right, so, the next piece that I want to step into is, what does the next ten years look like? And I want to pause for a second. These five goals that are up here are largely talking about establishing, growing, and expanding a department. The fact that you've already started, a lot of times whenever we do these plans, it takes six months, a year, two years to hit the ground running and actually start developing these. I gotta tell you, the amount of effort that Pitt County has taken to not only understand the public's needs, but immediately start to act on these things, I gotta hand it to you, that's outstanding. It doesn't happen. Normally, it takes three, four, five years to move up to that. But the fact that you've already formed this department, and that you're continuing to grow your partnerships, you're already improving, you're improving your marketing and branding, you have a new logo, you're getting communication out there, you're already expanding and improving your facility offerings, and you're already looking towards the future of expanding your programs in ways that you haven't done in the past. The fact that you're already starting to do this just really points to how much importance you believe this is, how important it is for you across the whole community. All right, so, in terms of action steps, if we can group them into three kind of separate areas, we looked at this over the next ten years. The key thing that I want you to take away here is, in the short term, it's gonna take some time to get these facilities up and going. And there's already actions to get that. That means staffing, that means getting the programs going throughout these new facilities, and establishing that brand. That typically takes between one and three years. And that next phase, beyond that, four to five years, you're really starting to grow those. You're looking towards the future and starting to, if needs be, establish additional parks and additional facilities. And then, beyond that, looking towards shoring up those revenue streams and making sure that you have that long-term growth approach to make sure that you're hitting those horizontal needs that are coming from your community. All right, so, some of the things that I want you to understand is, you've done a great job of anticipating these needs from the community. As soon as the department started to understand what the public was saying, they were starting to already take proactive steps towards this. Forming a new department, and strengthening those partnerships. You already started to develop this plan. You have this new park that is actually north of the river, which was, really, that came out through the public input a lot. And facility improvements with your existing facilities. These are all positive steps, and the fact that you're doing them so quickly, again, is important. So, I want to pause there, like I said, this was intended to hit just the high points of it. I want to open it up, if you have additional- I want to open it up if you have additional questions about any of the findings or the direction that we've laid out within the plan.
Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Nunley?
Well, thank you, thank you so much and thank you, oh, sorry, I keep forgetting this new thing. Yeah. Thank you so much for your presentation and I want to thank to our staff, current staff and former staff and some of the staff that is no longer with us that really helped get us off to this running start. You know, it's really been a team effort, the board, staff, everyone, so, and the community and so, but thank you for the presentation. I just want to make sure that as we're pushing out materials, so will this, will this summary be available for the public's perusal?
Yeah, so typical process is that it is considered in a draft document until you determine to adopt it, but yes, this is, y'all have it in hand, it is up to you to determine how best to disseminate that across the community.
Okay, so, so just want to make sure that we, you know, there's just some little graphical things that need to get cleaned up, but I really like that we're framing and seeing the metrics and that community feedback. That's really good. So when, when will we get, I guess, the final version that we can?
So some of the, the small issues that were pointed out, those are already being resolved immediately. So I would expect, you know, within a day or so, we should be able to get that, that final, absolute final version.
Okay, Jennifer, are you looking for us to approve this for tonight?
Is that right?
Okay. I'll make a motion if no one else has anything to say. To approve.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Motion and second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appointments to the Board of Adjustments.
Mr. Chairman, it's been recommended that you nominate one or two, a three or four adjustments to fill the seat attributed to north of the river and as noted on page 96 in the attachment, want to win currently in the qualitancy. And so when you make a report, choose a certain appointment, Commander McCallis will then advertise for that vacant qualitancy.
Pleasure to the Board.
Motion to the Board.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Appointments to the Bell Hall Fire District Commission.
Yes, so this one, Mr. Chairman, David Jones has resigned from the Bell Hall Fire District Commission as noted in the attachment because he's currently serving on the Bell Hall Fire Department Board. Charles Tucker, President of that commission, is recommending Steve Little for appointment to that seat and if the Board concurs, then Mr. Little's term will expire February 27.
Pleasure to the Board. Second. Motion and second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Appointments to the Pitt County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Yes, for this nomination, it's being recommended to appoint Dr. Lawrence Collins to fill the seat previously appointed to the Missioners' appointee. And he's appointed for terminal in February 27 and this recommendation was made in the letter found on the front of the 7th of April, 2027. Questions to the Board?
Second. Motion and second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six, reappointment to the Agricultural Advisory Board.
Of course, we have Community College. Is that the first or the last?
Oh, sorry about that. Appointments to the, appointment, reappointment to the Pitt Community College Board of Trustees.
There are three slots that need to be filled on the Community College Board of Trustees and in the letter found on page 112, you'll see the regulations by Charles Lindley, Vice Chair of the Pitt Community College Board of Trustees. And that would be to appoint Richie Williams to fill the seat previously held by Lieutenant Arnie and then to reappoint, or sorry, to appoint Charles Ellis to fill the seat previously held by Gary Evans and he's currently on that board. And then thirdly, to appoint Brian Floyd or to reappoint Brian Floyd to his seat.
Motion to the Board, second.
Motion and second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, reappointing to the Agricultural Advisory Board.
Yes, and for this one, it's being recommended that you nominate, will reappoint it, and change and qualify him to the Agricultural Advisory Board.
Questions to the Board?
Second. Motion. And a second, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion carries. Commissioners' comments will start auto wave down at the end. Commissioner White.
No comments.
Commissioner Nunley.
No comments.
Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner McGowan.
McGowan.
Let's keep it going. Commissioner Manning.
No comments.
I see you, Commissioner Smith. Mr. Brown. Lord, I hate to ask. Commissioner Perkins Williams. God bless you. All right. And our most famous voter tonight, please.
Motion to the Board.
Motion, second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Good night.